Who also has a six-week paid parental leave program. And I also had other comparable cities, and although they are, many are much larger than us, but I had them in the memo as well. King County, Washington was another, another good city that we looked at. And you'll see on page two of the memo that I just gave you an update for. We also have some new numbers from our HR department that gives you the 2015, 2016, 2017 data in the table. And then beneath that, I have the 2018 data that I just received as far as out of the city of Salisbury employees, how many we had in each of those fiscal years using FMLA. And of course, I'd be unpaid, but just utilizing FMLA leave. And along with that, I also provided the average age of the employees for each of those This program, at its very core, it allows, it would allow our employees to focus on both their family and on work as they could take paid parental leave after the birth of a child or adoption without exhausting their
Annual sick leave.
Thank you. Without exhausting their annual leave. Right now, employees would have to use their own leave time, and in some cases, they would exhaust all of it and not be able to take off if, in the event of they got sick or they needed to just take off a day for personal reasons after they come back after having a child. Because as you all know, FMLA allows for up to 12 weeks to be taken, but it's not paid. It's just essentially, it's just your job is being held. And we also believe that this would allow our city to offer a more holistic benefits package as it would serve to attract potential employees. As you know, many of the workforce that's coming up, the next generation, a lot of millennials will be entering our workforce. And this is certainly a benefit that millennials will look for to see if they can, really a family friendly benefit that shows at a, as a city organization, we do value both our employees and their families and family unit.
I think it's important to note that Nate mentioned, most of the cities that we did compare were larger cities, but we feel that this is an opportunity to be a leader in the smaller city avenue. The state of Maryland, this general assembly passed a paid parental leave. It's a little different, but it seems to be the way that certainly the world is going and that we're catching up. And it's gonna, it's gonna boost morale and folks are gonna be able to really focus on work and not have to worry about, can I take a day off when my kid's sick? And know that they're gonna have that time when they come back to work, which is really important. And it's mentioned in here, we don't believe there will be an added cost to this because it would just be surplus, salary surplus that would be going back. That salary wouldn't, wouldn't be going back because we would be paying it out, putting a budget for that every year. So it would be less of a cost savings if we implemented this.
Any questions? Comments? Okay. I think that certainly from my perspective, it's a, it's a great idea. And it's another benefit that really doesn't cost us any more than it's costing us now. And we're not the highest paying jobs, so. Okay. If there's no questions, we have consensus?
Support.
Consensus? Okay.
Thank you. I'd just like to thank Nate for all his hard work.
Thank you, Nate.
Thank you.
You're changing from here to office. When we first got here, he goes right out of central casting. Do the people who know you're on the ballot know you're for this?
All right. The research was very well done, Nate. It really was.
Great job, Nate.
Thank you very much. Okay. Next on the agenda is skate park phase two donation acceptance, Debbie Stam. Long time no see, Deb. It's good to see you.
How are you doing?
How are you? Whoops, got it upside down here. Okay, so you should all have in front of you the memo regarding the additional 1,500 that the Salisbury Skate Park recently donated. They had a fundraiser at the Lurking Class Skate Shop, another skate deck art fundraiser. Skate deck art fundraiser, that's right. And so they were able to donate another 1,500. And that 1,500 is going to be put toward the change order for the additional quarter pipe that's gonna go on the old restroom path. We're moving the restrooms out to a little gravel pad, which makes them more accessible for people who are just walking the greenway or whatever, so. And it's also, it's a safety issue. We don't want people walking across and possibly getting clipped by a skateboarder. Yeah. So, and I would also like to mention that with this donation, that brings the total that the skate park committee has donated to this overall project to $29,080. So they are just shy of their original $30,000 goal, which just goes to show you what a dedicated group of citizens who is committed to a cause can achieve over time. So they're very excited about that, and so am I.
Yeah. Any questions for Deb? I do have some, I do have a comment. Every time, I don't care what time of the day, every time I go over there, that place is being used. I think it probably has the highest utilization of anything that we've, we've done in the city. I've never seen anything like it.
Are you going over there to skate?
Be skate? It's like skiing. I don't do that either. No. But, and the other thing that I see is, it's a diverse group. There's, I'll say older, not, not my age people, but Hardy's age doing skateboarding. But I think that that shows that what the intent of the project is actually being exceeded in my mind, because I never thought that I would see the, and they all get along. It's not that the, and actually, it's really fun because you watch the, the older people coaching the younger people and the younger people relating to them. And my wife and I stopped on one Sunday morning and watched them for about 20 minutes. And it was just, it was good. It was just, and they were, they're respectful. I think it's a great project, and I'm glad that they've done it. And you're right, they should be commended, the committee should be commended for the work that they've done to raise that kind of money is really commendable.
And it's a family-oriented activity, too. You've got the skaters who grew up skating, and now they've taught their kids and the whole family skating together. It's wonderful.
Yep. Okay. We have consensus to accept? Okay. Thank you, Deb.
Thank you.
Have a good day. Now we're up to the water and sewer rate study discussion. Mike and Keith, and Keith, you have, or Mike, you have a guest?
Yes.
We should bring one more.
Keith's gonna hang in the back.
Okay, great. He's there when he needs ammunition.
He'll be in the hot seat tomorrow.
So the city contracted with Stan Tech to do a rate study, looking at our water and sewer rates. And the culmination of this effort is summarized in our slide report that we have here. So we'll go ahead and go through it. Dave and I'll tag you in a little bit at the presentation. Okay. So the issues we want to talk about, the study objectives in the background, water and sewer fund financial plan. Dave will talk about that. We'll share, talk about rates, custom, impacts and affordability, and then capacity fees, which is a separate element that we wanted to bring up a proposal to you, and then summary of recommendations. Key study objectives, evaluating the sufficiency of existing revenues to support the water and sewer fund, helping a financial plan, supporting short and long-term needs, examining existing rate structures, looking at customer impact, evaluate the existing capital charges and development, develop appropriate capital charges based on investment cost of providing system capacity. It's a little bit different than what we're doing now. Give us a background, the last formal rate study was done over 10 years ago. We'll continue to need to invest significant funds to address aging infrastructure, continuing demand for new technology applications we'll touch on to meet the increasing environmental protection, quality of product and customer service. And then there's an ongoing transformation in the industry requiring a higher degree of training and expertise in the operation of water and wastewater facilities. The days of the honeymooners with Ed Norton are long gone in terms of sewer employees. To give you a little background and the type of infrastructure we've got, there's a summary there in terms of the miles of sewer pipe, water pipe, roughly about the same, that's the distance from Salisbury to New York City. And then the primary resources that we have of infrastructure. And that is all taken into account when we look at our capacity fees and also take into account the age of our infrastructure and the continuing need to improve on it, replace it. This is a background, water and sewer rates reduced in FY 2014, 15, and increased in 17, 18, as we went through the sewer project. Currently, water and sewer rates are the same as they were in 2012, we're working with. I'll turn it over to Dave here.
Okay. Which one is it? One of those, okay. All right. Well, good evening. It's a pleasure to be here. I'm gonna take you through first the financial plan development, and that is a, really a key aspect of the rate study, because we need to look at what your revenues are, whether it's sufficient to fund the, the current operations of the system. So there's really three key components of the financial plan development. The first is developing the system revenue requirements. And so what that is, is that's the annual expenditures of the water and sewer system over our projection period. So we're gonna talk tonight about a 10-year, talk tonight about a five-year projection period, but our model that we've built to support the study goes out 10 years. So we're essentially looking at 10 years. So the revenue requirements include expenses of the system. So we took the fiscal year 18 budget, we escalated that on a line item by line item basis, looked at historical spending on those line items, as well as used cost indices and talked with staff about anticipated increases in expenditures. Our revenue requirements also include existing debt service, so investments that have been made in the system historically, we now have to pay off that debt service. And we also have to think about the capital improvement plan coming forward-looking. So for both the water and the sewer system, you have a capital improvement plan. So once we've developed the revenue requirements, we then look at the system revenue forecast. And so what we first want to do is look at what are your customers using in terms of the demands on the system, and how do we anticipate that changing over time? And then taking your existing rates and fees, what do we anticipate your revenues being going forward? So if we don't change the rates and fees, are revenues sufficient to cover your expenditures or your system revenue requirements? And then in light of that, we want to look at some key metrics on the water and sewer fund. Are we able to establish and maintain some minimum reserve balances? And also, can you meet your debt service requirements? We'll talk about both of those items here in a minute. So just to start off, the water system revenue requirements for fiscal year 19, you can see here, it's about $4.8 million in total, just a little bit over that. You can see about 50% is for personnel services or staff of operating the water system. The other 40% is O and M expenses, so chemicals, electricity, things of that sort. And then the remaining 10% is your existing debt on the system. So again, 4.8 million on water right now. On the sewer side, it's quite a bit more expensive. It's 12.2 million in revenue requirements. And that is made up primarily of three key components. It's again, personal services, so staffing, operating costs of the system, and then about a third is for existing debt. So you do have a fair amount of debt on the sewer side as compared to the water side. And also, it's typical in the industry for sewer, a sewer plant and sewer system to be more expensive to operate than a water system. So it's about three times more. So those are the revenue requirements. We also have to factor in the capital improvement plan. So the city provided us with a five-year capital improvement plan for fiscal year 19 through 23. This is for the water system. So you can see the individual planned projects. Most years, it's about 1.2 million, and then when we get out to fiscal year 2022, there's some bigger projects that bump it up to about $5 million, and then it drops back down to On the sewer side, a little bit less in terms of capital projects. You can see over the next five years what's planned. It bumps up and down, the big expenditure happened, happening in 2021. There are no planned expenditures in 2023, but for our modeling purposes, we did assume post 2023, to look at our 10-year forecast, we did assume some capital expenditures out into the future. So once we've looked at the revenue requirements, and I'll roll those up in just a moment, we also need to look at the revenues, as I mentioned. And we developed a, a demand projection. And that demand projection was based on looking at historical use. So if we go back to fiscal year 2012, from 2012 to 2017, you saw about a, close to a 6% increase in total demand. But that increase was all due to new connections. Your average customer usage is not changing on a per-account basis. If anything, it's going down slightly. So people aren't using more water and sewer, they're using the same amount. So as we look forward, our forecast again assumes that you're just gonna continue to see customers use the same amount. There's not gonna be a growth in per customer usage, but there is, is an anticipated growth in number of customers. So we're forecasting over the next five years, you're gonna see about a 4% increase in demand based on the city's growth projections. So that demand forecast is then used to let us look at the water revenue sufficiency. So what we do here is we bring forward all those expenditures, and then we're looking at it over a five-year period. So you can see our total revenue requirements for water in fiscal year 19 at 4.8 million. We anticipate that that's gonna grow as we fund the CIP due to inflationary increases in operating and paying off existing debt. It grows to about 5.9 million by fiscal year 23. Revenues from current rates, assuming you don't change rates going forward, would go from about 4.5 million today to about 4.6 million by 2023. As you can see, those revenues are not sufficient to meet the current expenditures. So in the current year, we're about, close to $300,000 short, and then that just grows as our costs go up and our revenues don't keep pace. So currently, the water system is not, revenues are not sufficient. On the sewer side, similarly, we bring forward the expenditures. So you can see the fiscal year 19 expenditures at 12.2 million. That grows to 13.2 as you take on a little bit more debt and as you have your operating expenditures increase due to inflation. And similarly to the water side, when we compare the revenues at current rates, current sewer rates, we're forecasting that they're gonna be short to the tune of close to $1 million in 19, and then that grows over time. So on the sewer side, we're also looking at revenues being insufficient. So the final component is to look at the water and sewer fund matrix. So what do we need to make sure, as we look at a financial plan, what metrics do we need to, to meet? And the first is just from the city charter. And the city charter outlines what you can do with water and sewer revenues, and it states that they have to be set in a separate fund and that they can be used for operating costs, for capital costs related to replacement of system assets and expansion of the system, as well as paying off debt service. Then the other key component is that it says that revenues on the system cannot be diverted anywhere else in the city. They have to stay in the water and sewer system, which makes sense. Two key components that we want to look at in terms of metrics is, one is reserves. We're recommending that you establish some reserves, so we want to provide reserves that allow for annual fluctuations in cash flows and emergency needs. And what we're recommending is that you target a reserve balance. That would be three months of your operating expenditures as a minimum reserve. However, as we just looked at on the previous slides, there are some issues, and so we're recommending that we phase that in over a three-year period. We try to meet that target after, after three years. And then the third component that we need to meet is that you do have, with the issuance of debt, you have bond covenants, which require you to have a certain amount of revenue on the system. And your current bond covenants require you to have revenues, less operating expenditures, that would be equal to 1.25 times the annual debt service. So that's your debt service coverage. That's the absolute minimum per your bond covenants. We recommend that you have a minimum coverage of 1.5. It's pretty typical in the industry. We don't want to set it at the 1.25 just because that's the absolute minimum. If you go below that, you have to notify the trustee that there's issues, and so we'd like to have that cushioned if you would. So we've looked at the system, and now I'm gonna talk a little bit about some of the scenarios that we've run. And I know there's a lot on this, this graphic, so let me explain what we're, we're looking at here. This is the dashboard from our financial model, and we've developed three scenarios that we want to take you through tonight, just in terms of what you're looking at. Up at the top, this first scenario assumes no rate increases. So you can see the percentage change in rates shown over the 10-year period there. The next line shows the debt coverage, which again, we want to keep at 1.5. 1.25 is, is what we absolutely can't fall below per your bond covenants. And then the graphics, we have the revenue fund, which demonstrates how much cash is in the water and sewer fund. We have revenues versus expenditures. So the blue line is the cash in the fund, the red line is the forecasted cash out of the fund. And then down at the bottom is just the annual capital improvements. To the left in the blue, that's the total capital improvements. The middle is how you're funding those. So under this scenario, we're assuming you'd have to issue debt to fund them and then the long-term borrowing associated with that. So obviously, under this scenario, no rate increases. We have issues, we're unable to meet our debt service coverage. Our expenditures clearly exceed our revenues, and ultimately, we would have a negative cash balance by 2020. So truly not a sustainable situation. So our next scenario is to, to look at what if we do just-in-time rate increases? So what if we increase rates irregardless of the magnitude, just in time? And under this scenario, you'd see pretty substantial increases, almost 10% in 19. Then you could take a year off, and then again, substantial increases. And then a couple of years off until there's really substantial increases in water and sewer. And this would, you know, really have the bills jumping up and down year over year. It would allow you to maintain and build up that operating reserve by 2021. So that would be our target, and our revenues and expenditures would be in line. And ultimately, down here at the bottom, it would allow us to not have to completely debt fund the capital improvement plan. So you can see where there's a little bit of orange, that would mean that we'd begin to start funding some of the capital improvement plan with cash instead of debt. The third scenario, and, and the one that we're recommending, is a phased approach. And what this approach would do would be to increase the water and sewer rates over the next couple of years, and then ultimately have inflationary level increases in the future to ensure that the fund would stay consistent with your expenditures. That would allow us to have an operating reserve by 2021. You can see our revenues and expenditures are very much in line. And this one really allows us to cash fund a lot more of the CIP. You can see that as we get into 2022, 23, 24, and 25, we're able to really cash fund a lot more of the CIP. And so what we are recommending are, are these adjustments under this third scenario. So 8% this next fiscal year, followed by 7.5, 5, 5, and 3 for water and sewer. This would allow you to fund the system, the operating existing debt, as well as the future capital, and you would be able to establish that operating reserve by 2021. Okay?
Couple of questions. You mentioned we had a, they had a plan 10, they did a plan 10 years ago.
Yes.
Did we follow that plan?
A lot of that was reformed with the plant changes, the construction and then the reconstruction. So a lot of that stuff, I think, went out the window, kind of thing. Because I got a lot of those other costs that came into play that were probably not anticipated with that rate.
What about in terms of the rates?
I could look at that and give you that breakdown to see where they were.
I mean, they lowered them basically, right? 10 years ago, and then they stayed constant until?
Well, even go a little further back than that. There were probably some other rate changes that were done at that time. But I think one of the things there was the circumstances in terms of what we were needing to do with the wastewater plant. I think it would put the thing in a whole different mode in terms of trying to meet that schedule.
And I think after that rate study, we also had MDE requirements changed. So there was a lot that, that went on too, so we didn't anticipate.
Mr. Cordy, can I ask you a question? Do you know what percent of our debt, our total debt, the water and sewer is roughly?
I do not.
Can you maybe get that for me tomorrow?
Yes, sure.
This is not a pretty picture, for sure.
You're absolutely correct, but it is the same picture that every year during the budget time, when we get to water shower and it's late and there's nobody here, and we're all in here. This is, this is not a picture that anybody is surprised at. So I have a series of questions that are sort of cascading, one sort of cascades into the next one. And I just, how do you, and I don't know if this is you, Chris, I have the wrong glasses on because mine broke at the Sears a little while ago. So if somebody has to say that's really one point less than it is on your, then just tell me, but I'm doing my best. We go from 2.11 revenues over costs, basically, and if I use jargon, it's for regular speaking people, so that if anybody's watching or paying attention to this, they can get it right. How do we go from 2.11 to one, to, in less than four years, half that? What, what did, you know, besides the wastewater treatment plant? Because, you know, we do the lift stations when we do, and we, you know, these are on, these get done. Glen Avenue's, I think the next one, we've done the one down on Fitzwater Street, you know, the pump stations, the whole bit. What causes in five years, 2.11, which I think most of the people would, in your area, and it's not those nice people who tells us that we have to take all that, what are those people? Who are the people that tell us we have to have everybody's retirement money for the next 100 years in the bank? Who are they?
I know you're talking GAFO.
Yeah, those nice folks. What's going on in those five years in your study that all of a sudden the sky has fallen?
Well, it's, it's a number of things.
Is there something in this CIP? Is there something in our budget book? Is there something on one of your graphs that tells us, yo, because there's only one of three things that's happening? I'm asking these questions of money people. Do we not, are we not making it A because people don't pay enough? B because our infrastructure is, is too old, needs to be replaced? Or B1, we have too, we have too much debt? Because what we have to decide is, what isn't gonna get done in order to make sure that people don't go from $100 a month to, that's no increases. What you suggest being eight, 15, 20, 23, 26, 28, and these are all 50, so that's 30, 32, 30, about a 35% increase. About a 35% increase. Which for the low-end user, the thousand gallon user, is about $45 over the next several years. So the question is, is how, what do you suggest? All right, first off, let's go back to why does it in that five years go from everything looks to be okay for the numbers people to buy down or, or any, but you know what?
Well, there's, there's two things. One is that it is the CIP, you are adding debt. So as soon as you add debt, that increases your coverage requirement.
Okay, I, I completely understand that. I was asking specifically, I mean, what projects, Mr. Molds and Mr. Cordry, are causing that to? So that we can look at those projects and then when someone stops me in the grocery store, I can say, "The Glen Avenue Lift Station is getting ready to collapse and your sewer is getting ready." So that's why you had to.
Sure.
It's CIP, Chuck.
Yeah, CIP, but you've got that.
Would this be better, the one that's in the budget book be better?
This, this was before.
This is just.
This is the one that was approved by council.
That we just, we just do.
So you've got projects that are maintaining our infrastructure, keeping what we've got working. And then I think the highlight there is a couple of things we was going to get into a little later. Where you, David Moen mentioned there were blips where there's a lot more expended on. You can see on the water one is the filter replacement project in '22. It's $3 million. For those of you who've been after the plan, I think most of you have, the filters that sit in that big room, the original from 1975, they're rehab ones. They need to be re, they're beyond their lifetime expectancy. And we need to look at having to replace those. So it's a big project. You can imagine we'd have to literally build another building next to it because we've got to keep those in service, build the new ones and then renovate what we've got in. So it's a very expensive project and has a big impact on our cost because the numbers that Dave ran are, include being able to fund the CIP. That's the premise that we plugged in there. The other big project that you'll see down at the bottom there is the automated metering infrastructure. This, I think, we will look at in terms of customer ability, but customer service. And I can get back into more detail when we get to the end to kind of show you where we're going. A lot of cities are going to this because of a lot of the advantages that will have help with customer service. So people will see this as an investment that will have a direct impact on them in terms of the thing, how they pay their bills.
So if something, an example of automated metering would be if there's a sudden immediate spike in somebody's water, busted pipe or something like that. Instead of it going for weeks, we would know almost immediately that, hey, there's, this customer uses so much a day that all of a sudden there, is that kind of like?
You will literally be able, one, when the recognition is looking to go to monthly billing. So from affordability standpoint, instead of getting, you got three quarterly bill or get a monthly bill, like you get with every, your phone bill, like the, or whatnot. The other thing that you'll be able to do is with an app on your phone, you'll be able to look at, and I can show you an exhibit a little later when we get into it. And you can see how your water usage is improved. So if you have a leak, you'll see what's something on it, it'll detect that right away. It'll show how your budget is in terms of the usage and you can see how it's moving. So they're getting that direct impact rather than waiting 90 days and then having to find out their bills higher. Those kind of services are where a lot of cities are going. In addition to that, the metering system technology has moved to the point where you can sense, this is what the meters are going to look like. And you don't have basically straight shot through it, so we don't have plugged meters anymore. It's all computer and then this sends a signal, can be queried at any time to, and that down in finance or our people in utilities to find out what the usage is. And calculate that. But so you're removing all the brass, it's all plastic and it uses ultrasonic technology. We have a problem a lot with jammed meters. Meters get jammed and whatnot because they're positive displacement, it's to fill the chamber. There's no chamber on that thing, it senses it, it's using sonar. The technology on these things.
Those are stuff for the sewer.
So those are the aspects, you're seeing a lot of costing here to build that to get to that. The 250,000 is pilot study to look at using these type of systems, selecting that technology because of the investment we make. And then phasing that in over those 10,000 roughly water meters that we would need to replace or retrofit. So it's enough.
Can I, can I ask this question? If you go down to the current customer detail slot, and I'm not, I'm not suggesting that you're wrong. I'm not, I'm thinking out loud. On this particular one, page 38. Inside the city limits, those minimum users, how many of the 8,000? See, this, this tells us how many are residential and small commercial, but it doesn't tell us how many are the minimum users? Because I'm just suggesting that 3.25 million, to make it easier for somebody to look on their phone, if most of us are 1,000 gallon people. And Mira is correct, we, it would help people know if something was going wrong. We also have a process that helps people if something goes wrong after the fact, when people can show that this water bill has been this amount for this many years and obviously something. And we have a process to help people gain relief. I'm, I'm just asking, do we know how many are the minimum, the minimum users of those 8,418 people?
I don't remember off the top of my head, we have the data.
I'd like that. And then I'd like to know whether or not it would be possible to take those filter replacements and start to spread them out or start to buy some of them now? Or is that something that has to, as we learned from the wastewater treatment plant, has to be done on this day at this time with these people?
It's, it's, the, the filter project is, you pretty much have to jump in the whole thing. Because if you remember, those, those vessels are.
I mean, if they, if they can last since 1978, certainly we could buy a few now and they'd last till 2021, wouldn't they?
Well, which you'd be having them sit outside, which wouldn't be.
I wouldn't put them outside.
Well, we'd have to be.
Your office.
Thanks. One of the things that we will look at too are, there are different ways of treating that. Basically, what we're doing is removing the iron, getting out of the water. And we're not married necessarily to use that, there's other acceptable technologies. We want to look at that to probably see how we can save money. But the, the plan originally was to use, you know, replace what was there in terms of looking at that. I, I don't know that it's something, you're going to get a better value rather than buying one of these big vessels, setting aside, having to pick it up, move it, all that when you get around to doing it versus the economy of scale of buying them all from a manufacturer at that time under one project.
If we could find the money for you to buy them now and do it now, could you do it now?
Do the project, the whole project? It will take the design time to do that. So we'd have to go through a design and evaluation to get to that point. Obviously, it could be done if we decided to go ahead. I think the one, what we're trying to look at here necessarily would be because that's pushed out a little bit more, the idea here is to slowly raise the rate so that you can accumulate some cash to help offset having to then just do a bond issue to pay for it at that time. So that you can use some of those cash reserves and then reduce some of your funding costs.
Additionally, on that particular page, it was back to 27, the restoring of the park well field. I know that we've had this conversation two or three times over the past year or so, but we have had a discussion about whether or not we need those. And you had suggested that the state of Maryland was asking us to make sure that we had different places besides, have more than just one than up north.
Yeah, the studies that we had looked at was to look, one of it was a question, do we continue with park? And the studies looked at the ability that, that there are two different aquifers that we draw from. So you have a reliability of it. The other problem is before we can phase in, let's say Paleo that would be big enough for it, we're going to be forced to have to make investments in park to keep it running. Can't just shut it down and walk away from it.
We opened up a couple wells at Paleo over the last.
We're, we're, we're putting, where you have the project out, going out for bid is for Paleo 3, that'll be the third well. So that we can do rotations of the wells. But that was to add capacity to Paleo, yes, in the event of future growth. But, but to get to your answer with park, we found that the, now we may invest this money to keep park running. And then to just walk away from that investment didn't start making sense because we had to spend the money. Plus, it was an allocation, we have an allocation of water capacity from that aquifer. If we shut down park, we would have to get that allocation increased at Paleo in order to.
Isn't it increasing anyway because you're getting a third?
No, because we do, it's a rotation.
You're doing a rotation.
Because you'll take, you'll want to be, you have a reserve well, you have your operating well. And then when you take a well out for reconditioning, you can do that rotation. And typically, I think well number one is not as good a, we have more iron in that one. So that'll probably be our backup well and we'll rely on two and three we got.
Is this basically, and I'm not sure if I've gotten that far down in, in the budget book. Is this basically what the mayor is proposing? Is this exactly the same page?
The, in terms of what, the CIP?
Yeah, because I mean, if we, if we went through every one of these and I made you, if all of us made you sit here and say, well, what about these improvements to the, to the park building that we're building? Are we going to find out that we're putting parking spaces in or is this something that is absolutely necessary for this? When you go down to the park, like the gear replacement, as our fiduciary responsibility, I'm going to have to wear that gear for you to give, for me to vote to give you $245,000 on something that I have no idea what that is.
It's, I have not had a chance to go, Keith just sent the email with the proposed budget. So I haven't had a chance to go through with it. And you know what Keith's email.
Yes, exactly.
So I, I couldn't tell you what's still floating in it. Obviously, as, as council sees the budget, they can see where some of the recommendations are in terms of balancing out. But the net effect here is to try to do these projects which are in need to preserve the capacity we got, replace facilities that need maintenance over a period of time. That's the restoration of the well fields and bring into service this type of technology that will help our customers and hopefully reduce labor costs in terms of metering. Because that's all done like.
Would you or Mr. Cordry suggest that if we had to make decisions to take some of these things out, how it would change? Because this is, this is, this is what everybody wants. And I know departments and I did six of these myself and budgets are what everybody wants. And that ain't what everyone's going to get. So my question is, is if we were to go through this, Mr. Council President, and look at each one of these things and have to make a decision in order to reduce the impact, would we be able to see the impact on your slides of where it would go? I mean, just for fun, let's take out one year of making it easier on your phone to know how much water usage you have and what would that do, what would that do to those, to those, those graphs?
Yes, we can.
Okay.
Yes.
I don't really know what the question is or which one of these it is.
It's, it's all.
Unfortunately, what happens on this side of the table, and I did it for six years, so I'll take complete, is you walk in and you go, "The sky is falling, I hope you guys, I hope you, I hope you guys funded." And there's always room to spend less.
But sometimes, but sometimes we make those decisions and they come back to bites.
Well, and, and, Mr. Cord, there's never been a decision I didn't make that Mr. Cordry didn't come back and bite me and, and say that. But I guess the overarching concern is, is that you have said people are used, not, they're using the same amount or less in both the water and sewer. So it would be helpful from my standpoint if the mayor could give us some direction as to what he wants to tell people is the necessity for this big. And if we go with the reasonable one, the little ones over the course of the next, I guess that's 10 years, isn't it? You know, what, what is it that, that, that we'd like to say? I, I could come up with what I said, but for six years I said it wrong. So I prefer to have someone who gets it right pretty much every day in the newspaper, tell me what it is we're supposed to say so that I can get it right too.
One of the, one of the things to consider when we do these is that, let's say there's a project in FY19 and this study includes inflation. So if you defer a project in FY19, it will get more expensive when you want to do it in FY20. And that's part of the.
Didn't we move at the end of last year, at the end of last budget, those last couple hours? Didn't we move some money?
We took money, because the initial recommendation was 15% increase.
Right.
We moved some.
Some of the money sitting in one of the.
There was, from a capacity.
There's nothing, there's nothing left though, right?
Yeah, we took that to offset.
We did that so that we wouldn't have a 27.
I was just trying to reflect exactly what we did. Because that was our discussion was.
Well, because there was a lot of stuff going on last year because we, taxes went up, this was going up.
That's right.
Trash feed, so, you know, that's the.
That's why we did it.
It was, it was a lot.
But even if we wanted to do it now, it ain't there.
Well, I'm not suggesting, I'm just trying to get an idea of what it, reflect exactly what it was that we did.
Yeah, we took it from 14 something to eight.
All right.
Yeah.
All right, let me cut back up where we were down here. That's where we stop. Okay, customer impacts. Here's your, oh, geez, I spilled one of your things just now.
That's okay.
Here's the current customer detail in terms of the breakdown that we looked at just a few minutes ago. And we'll get back to you in terms of that breakdown in terms of the 8,418. As you know, there's two other separate outside of the city is charged two, two times. And then the Warwick Community College Urban District is one and a half times in terms of the rate. So that's pretty consistent going through that.
All right, so this is your current water and sewer rate structure. As Mike mentioned, you do have an outside city differential. So you categorize your customers into basically three, three categories. You have residential, small, commercial, commercial, large, commercial and industrial. And as it stands right now, there is a minimum charge. For residential and small, commercial, that includes 6,000 gallons of usage per quarter. So if you don't use more than that, that's, that's basically what you pay. And then once you go over that, if you're, if you're using 8,000 gallons a quarter, then you would pay the 319 per thousand gallons for that usage. Sewer side, it's the same structure, you can see the minimum charge. There is a benefit in this structure in that a lot of communities around the country don't have minimum charges to this level. And what that does for you is it provides you a guaranteed amount of revenue. A lot of your.
Charges high?
Not, not in terms of the fixed charges, no.
So we charge more, better, make less?
Well, it, it's all relative in terms of the total, the total system. In terms of the percentage of your revenue that's coming from the fixed charges is higher than some communities. What that does is it gives you that guaranteed amount of revenue to cover those fixed costs of your system. Because regardless of whether people use water sewer or not, you still have to retire the debt, complete the capital projects, the vast majority of your costs are fixed. So when we look at this from a rate perspective forecast, when we apply those rate increases that we looked at on the previous slide, you can see what the minimum charges would be for water going forward. Again, the increases in eight, the 19, 20, 21, and applying those across the board to the fixed charges and the minimum charges. On the sewer side, same approach, what the fixed charges would be on a, on an annual basis going forward and then what the volume charges are per thousand gallons. So to put this in perspective, we did want to show you what customer bills would look like. So your average customer uses about 6,000 gallons, looking at your, at your usage profile. So your average residential customer uses, uses 18,000 gallons per quarter. So their current bill right now is just about $200 per quarter. With the increases that have been recommended, that would increase to by $16 per quarter beginning in fiscal year 19. And then in the subsequent year, it would be an additional $12 per quarter. And then in the year 2021, it would be $8.46 per quarter. And again, this is your typical residential customer. So a total bill going from $200 to $236 over the three-year period. Your average commercial customer, so falling into that second range, uses a lot of water, 396,000 gallons a quarter. So you can see what their bill would be currently about $3,945. Would increase by $300 in the first year, 238 in the second year and then 100, about 170 in the third year. And again, that's the average customer within that second group. And then the third group, in terms of the industrial customers, you don't have a tremendous number of these, but they use, do use a lot of water. Current total bill, $18,700 a quarter. And then you can see subsequent years what the bill would be. And so next, we have some comparisons of communities around the state. So this is, again, for your typical quarterly five-eighths inch water bill, your typical residential customer using 18,000 gallons per quarter. You can see on the water side, in this comparison, you're at the end of this, this scale, lower end of the scale. So current bill at $57 for water a quarter, going up to $62 for water per quarter.
There's no way below us?
Not.
Well, this was a sample, you took someone, cities in the area, everything, but that, we didn't cast a what net.
And then on the sewer, sewer bill comparison, you can see you're more to the mid-higher range. The current sewer bill, $142, proposed in 19, $153. So you would be at the, at the top end of the range in comparison there. When we bring them together, we can look at the combined water and sewer bill, again, $200 today, going to 215 in 2019 under the recommended adjustments. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mike to talk about affordability.
All right, with any, anything like this, when you look at rate increases, you want to see what the impact is on residents in terms of census data. I'm sorry, sugar.
Just one, one quick question. In the comparison, did you use inflation on the, on the other rates going up?
No, those are the current.
This is just current, yeah.
Currently established rates.
Thank you.
Any other questions on those? Okay. So in going through these type of studies, there's a typical affordability consideration. Our EPA has established a criteria for evaluating water and sewer affordability in a community. And what they basically, the barometer that they like to use is water and sewer bills combined should not exceed 4% of the median household income. So looking at the proposed annual water sewer bill with the first increase, we have the information from the census for Salisbury median income, household, and that comes to about 2.3% as compared to the 4% barometer that they use. So one of the things in looking at some of these studies that are coming out, and American Water Works Association has looked at studies in terms of looking at affordability with water and sewer systems, as more and more technology is being required to get the water to a higher degree of cleanliness and for discharge of sewer, to protect waterways, is to look more focused on the lower income. That's this next slide. One of the other studies and reports that are kind of out there to look at have suggested looking at the minimum wage income. And with a barometer that the combined water and sewer bills have a goal to be no more than eight hours of income per month. So taking that concept, we went and took that, looked, looked at that with the proposed sewer rate. And as you see there, the $10.10 will be the new minimum wage in July as it goes up. And in that comparison, we're about 7.1 hours in terms of that. So basically, you're going to homeowner, you have to work at minimum wage, you would have to work one day to be able to afford your monthly water and sewer bill. Looking at that concept. The other concept that's out there, it's a little more harder to try to get a handle on, is looking at affordability based on percent of household income, household level of disposable income at the 20th percentile. So what you have to try to do is, one, you go on the census data, get your 20th percentile, and then try to come up with what the living wage costs are for someone, excluding obviously your water and sewer bill. So there's a 2016 American Community Survey Northeast Region where we looked at in terms of essential non-water and sewer living expenses. So you take that 20 percentile income, subtract out those essential living expenses, and then divide that into the water and sewer bill, and look at that percentage. The goal in some of the, the discussions is to try to shoot for 10%. Salisbury with the AR20 at 16,000 has an impact on what that affordability looks at. Our current billing without the rate increase would put us about 15.9%. So the increase is 17.2. Now, if you look at the 20th percentile for Wycomico County, which is $21,838, that comes to 7.9%. So there's an impact in terms of the type of community we've got in the city in terms of looking at that affordability. So I wanted to bring that out to kind of look at the different concepts that are out there and trying to address these kind of things. And in a little while, I'll look at some concepts that are suggested, ways that we can try to help in terms of low-income people with that. We'll get back to that if we finish the, the presentation. Any questions on that? So I want to leave the, the sewer and water fees for a moment to get into capacity fees. This is the fee, the set of fees, one-time charges that are designed to recover the cost of capacity for a new developer. Developer comes in, he's got to pay a certain charge in order to get access to water and sewer. And that's a benefit typically for development. One, because that brings development to the city, because we have the water and sewer resources. Plus, it's much more difficult for a commercial enterprise or industrial enterprise because they need sewer facilities that can't utilize online-type systems. So there's an advantage there. But this infrastructure had to be billed at a cost. So the benefits they provide with this capacity fees allows growth to pay its own way, minimize the costs, burden for future expansion. The distinct, existing charges we're looking at is the water capacity fee, sewer capacity fee, and the central system line fee. That's when somebody wants to, I'll give an example, Riverside Drive was a new home just constructed there. That ties into the existing sewer that was already there. So we look at that core area of sewer, sewer water facilities, and they have to pay for the cost of what that line was put in. Now, the way that's calculated is a little different. Now, there's also other fees that are part of what we call the comprehensive connection charges that don't really change, the facility fee, the line fee, tapping fees. They all relate to the cost of doing, putting the meter in place, things that don't change. And it's a cost recovery type thing. So we're looking really at the capacity, the development capacity. So the water and sewer capacity fees under the current ordinance are based on a 10-year CIP, according to ordinance. So my question is, when was the last time you saw a 10-year CIP? So there's a problem there. It's, one, it's a difficulty in defining capacity-related projects. Changes in the CIP based on funding result in fluctuations in capacity and doing that fee. Just as Councilman Iretin, some of these projects fly, but you've used that as the basis for calculating your capacity fee. So it's constantly changing. You also have changes in terms of future grant funding impacts, where those costs may be funded by a grant and not actual cost to the city in putting that capacity in place. The central system line fees intended to recover construction costs, as I mentioned, from future development using existing mains. To calculate that fee, it's based on the square footage of the development times a unit cost of construction of water and sewer. So the question is, how do you really relate that to something like a real forms? Basically, all they're doing is assuming that all development is a perfect square. So you have the square root, square of it. And that front footage is the cost of what that was, that sewer that went in. So somebody does a nice skinny long development, and it got really good. So it's just a way of doing that. And it's not really as accurate as it could be. So that's where experience has shown that the termination of these fees don't represent the costs that are intended to address. What we would like to look at is an equity-based alternative fee.
And this, I'm, I'm sorry. Before, before we, if I'm reading correctly, before we switch down to, we're not going to call them capacity fees anymore, and there might be something different to call them and a different.
Term.
Or, or arithmetic equation to determine what we want. Could I ask a few questions about the capacity fee?
Sure.
That be all right? Because the question presented to us, can we afford to continue to give breaks on capacity fees? 500 units of affordable housing since we started doing affordable housing unit. We, we've taken that fee. We've said we want to be good for business, because this is what you don't hear when people say they're good for business, is that there's a cost on the other side of the government that has to be made up by what you have in charge. Now, we don't have the newest of what's going on out on Beagle Park Drive, but it is not big. It is new ones, and thank God there was a new one, thank God. But we're not in the hundreds and hundreds range. We got about 13, 20, something like that. So we gave somebody a break, and then we come here, and to quote Mr. Cordery, "The sky is falling." So I'm worried that when you go down to the next slide, that that's going to say that there's a different way to do it, when my real question is, the discussion is to, did we do what we were supposed to do, giving all these breaks in the first place? And I'm not really sure, once you add up all your fees and everything on 500 units of affordable housing, how much difference that's going to make to that man's grass? I don't know whether or not the 13 to 20 units, the breaks we gave, did we just help somebody out and, and they found a cost to, you know, they found a way to afford building new homes? And what does that mean for the person who lives here that we've given the breaks for affordable housing for people to build new homes, only to have to come back and have the council say it's existing people that are going to have to pay for it, when we are using less of both water and sewer? So mine is more of a philosophical question for us and for the mayor. Have we been doing it wrong? And now we're going to get, we're going to get the, the, the pitch, and I'm not saying there's a slow wind up before it, but I'm saying the pitch, that there's a different way to do it. And what will the council 15 years from now, when somebody comes back and says, "Well, equity way of doing it." I'm just, I'm concerned that every time government gets itself in a jam, someone comes up with a different idea, or a new consultant, no disrespect to you, sir, but a new consultant comes along and says, "Ah, there's another way to do it." But if we can't, if I'm using less, I'm flushing less and I'm pouring water less, yet we've managed to give breaks to every person who has essentially asked for it, we've gone in and we've said to places like Pepsi, "You use less sewer, you don't use sewer. You only use your water, so we're going to give you a break on this." We've done everything that everybody said we were supposed to do to be business-friendly, but it is the five of us who are now tasked with. And to be honest with you, I don't think that over the course of 10 years, $46 more dollars on my water and sewer bills could kill me. But I'm saying, I don't, I'm, I get the feeling sometimes when things start to look bad, that somebody's got to come in with a new idea and go, "Oh, there's a better way to do it." Well, you sure damn well told me 10 years ago, you know, when, if. And that leads to a bigger conversation about your capacity. You need that third, that third water. Because I'm trying to figure out a way to cut something off these sheets in my head.
Right. Let me take a stab.
We depend on you for clarity and expertise. And then I try and take that clarity and expertise and get through the line at Walmart or at me without, you know, somebody saying, are you, you know? And there are landlords in the room, we know where this is going to get passed on to.
Okay, let me, you got, you had several questions.
I know, I just, I just.
First of all, when we're looking at capacity fee, we want to look at it in terms, and we try to simplify the fact that people are buying into capacity that you've built. So those, those funds would then go into our capital reserve account to offset what we might have to borrow later. It's having that cash available for improving, increasing our capacity. That's the one.
There's absolutely going to be no need for capacity increases with this new plant going online. Not when you're only building 18 more houses.
That's where the, the terminology is going to change later in the slide, is you're going to say, we're getting away from calling it capacity, it's infrastructure. So remember the problem we had where it had to fit as to whether it was capacity or. It's going, we're going to be looking at capa, at our infrastructure. It becomes an infrastructure reserve account that we build up. So when we have these projects, we will have an opportunity, one, that we don't have to, we have those funds available that we don't have to borrow and pay financing to be able to help pay for that and supplement the money we need to keep our facilities going. And they don't necessarily have to expand, it's putting those filters that we have to replace. So that's, that's where that fee goes. The second part of the thing is the, and, and this is, I think, the theory behind it, is by waiving the, the capacity fees, the idea is that you bring people into the city that then become rate payers. And with water and sewer systems, you always want to have some growth, because that growth helps offset inflationary pressures and that go on to it. So now you're bringing those customers as, as rate-paying customers.
Growth never pays for itself. I never disagree with you, public. But I'm going to tell you right now, every study, and the mayor will tell you this, growth never pays for itself.
That, what, what you're referring to, and I was part of a, a study in Lancaster County where they looked at that study, they looked at growth. But that was growth related to everything, police, fire, things. I'm looking at it just from the water and sewer part of it.
Well, and I can tell you, looking out on, on Merritt Mill Road, that without anybody to tell us how many cops we're going to need to police another area with 179 people, how many classrooms we're going to need at Glen Avenue, that we're not even asking that question when we bring places in. Because that's, some of that is a county thing. I just, I.
I got my tunnel vision on it, because I'm looking at water.
There you go, I got you, we're talking about water, sir, sorry about that.
That's all right. So the, the model that I'm looking at here is patterned after one in the state of Pennsylvania when it was up there, that they actually put it into a code in terms of a tapping for regulation, regulation. They've regulated what municipalities could set in terms of their rate. So it's based on, it's been in place for probably almost 20 years now. And we wanted to pattern after it. What this does for you is it establishes a buy-in. So in other words, if you built the facility, it's like buying into a partnership or a company.
A lop.
Right. Is that you go in and if I've been paying rates for 20 years into my system, I've built equity into that system, and that, that system has a value, as we'll show in here. And anybody else that wants to come in has to buy in at that current value, whatever that is. Inflation, improvements, everything that's going into it. So the gauge in terms of deciding whether you, as a council, want to decrease that fee or in certain cases waive it because of the opportunities that they have to bring in a factory or an industry, is your gauge. In that, that's my buy-in, and then when you want, if you want to go something less, you can. But then there's a cost associated with that and a barometer to have. The current one you've got right now is just based on this 10-year CIP that we don't know whether it's even going to get billed or changes.
Don't say that too loud with people who've charged it. There's lawyers in this town.
It's changed over the years as different priorities come into place. So projects that were done or completed or get pushed off because we have other alternatives. So what happens is you're constantly updating it. This one establishes a set cost and over a period of time, you adjust that cost as Keith adds assets, as inflationary costs, we update that value, the stock value of the system, if you want to call it. So that anybody that wants to come in, there's a real defensible barometer that you've got of what that cost is. And that's what we're trying to do, to make it straightforward in terms of how you arrived at that cost, what that cost is associated with in terms of a buy-in, and then being able to make an informed decision as to what you want to charge that rate. Does that help? That might help, we'll go, go through this too. So here, yep.
Are you suggesting that we adopt an equity-based alternative fee?
That's our recommendation.
That's going to be your recommendation?
Yes. Because the one that we have is, is, it's very difficult to work with to really give you a good number from an engineer's point of view. So I've kind of touched on a couple of these things here. It's based on the current equity value of the system per equivalent dwelling unit. So developers have to buy into the current value of the system. Recognizes contributions, existing users have contributed to the construction of the system over time. Somebody who's, you know, back in 1929, who's started paying into the system and paying into that equity over a period of time. As the system value increased over time, as things got more expensive, their equity value is there. So they're getting rewarded for that.
How, how is the reward experienced?
Basically, because of the overall value of the system becoming, what it cost to put the same thing in 1929 is not what it costs to put in today. So that increase in value as a result of the equity of, it was cheaper to put it in and pay those fees. And then in the future, you've got that cheaper cost brought forward to it in the end.
So how, I'm, I'm still having problems envisioning how I would experience it. So what sort of assets are we talking about? What sort of assets are we talking about bringing into the system?
Let him, let him go through the presentation first and then maybe we can.
That'll help you out a little bit, show you, and that, that may help your answer quick, but we'll come back to you on that. So what we're doing is we're using a total current valuation of the water and sewer assets and the number of EDUs which establishes your capacity. To determine the cost share.
Is that P fifty-six? No, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the actual numbers.
I'm sorry. The other thing we wanna do to be, to be fair in terms of how we do it. Is that any grant funding, outstanding debt, any developer dedicated facilities are not included in the evaluation. Cause it didn't cost us anything in terms of that equity valuation. So we wanna do that cause the outstanding debt is gonna be paid by the rate payers, not the upfront cost. And developer dedicated facilities, you know, they're turned over to us. Now we have to operate those facilities, so that's part of the rate decision that will be covered. So basically taking the value of the system, your credit basically is your, your grants. Developer donated facilities divided by the system capacity to come up with a cost per EDU. The value of the utility system is a depreciated value, as Keith likes to say, depreciates things. Me, I just run until I run into the ground. And it's escalated to current replacement costs, so we use established indices to update those costs. So it goes back to the question you were talking about, when that facility was put in, that sewer pipe was maybe ten dollars a foot. Over a period of time, now it costs twenty-five dollars a foot from the time when it was installed to now. So now it has a value of twenty-five dollars. Credit again is existing principally a utility debt that's carried through. And the system capacity is a total capacity measured based on equivalent dwelling units. So.
Excuse me, one second.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Just wanna make sure. And if number one, which is the value of the utility system. It's current replaceable value. Cause this depreciated value escalated to current replacement cost is full replacement value. Current replacement value, correct or no?
So it's the, so it's the value of the system that's not fully depreciated, brought up to current replacement cost. So if you have a system that's fifty percent depreciated, then we bring that up to current cost.
Correct. At the current cost.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep, you got it.
So.
So the value is actually the full cost replacement, not what's left of its value of its life? Is this like, let's say, everybody's been talking for the next hundred years and. I can't get away from it.
Just shut that part of the brain off.
All right. So you remember that lit, uh, slide where we had the, the water, two water plants and all this pipe in the ground and everything, okay? What we did, and this was quite an exercise that I took upon myself, was to value that utility system. Our water system has a value of a hundred and fifty million dollars, that's what, what we've got. So it's quite an investment that we've made over time and what we have to maintain.
And you're gonna subtract out the grant fee, the money that we got in. So you're getting a net.
Correct.
About adjusted value.
Correct.
Right.
And the credit, what, what was that, Jack? The credit again is outstanding principal, so we've actually seen that tonight for a million dollars worth of debt. That was on one of the pie graphs, correct? Am I right?
Well, that was, that was annual debt service. So this is the outstanding principal on debt.
On all of it.
On your water.
On your water and sewer.
By water, I'm sorry.
It's not the sewer, I think we all know that. If only, if only it was that.
Yeah.
Okay.
And it also takes out any assets that were donated to the city.
Okay.
So that, that system, that value has capacity of so many equivalent dwelling units. Now, a portion of those dwelling units are already people that are on the system already. So you have the people that are already paying into it and then the capacity that we have left over. They pay their equal share, just like we've divided, we've taken that whole pie, divided between all the equal people, EDUs. And the capacity that we have, so the developers would pay their share.
They're paying exactly the same as the people who are already.
Paid into the system.
Paid into the system.
Okay.
That makes sense.
So here we go through the numbers. Comes out to three thousand three hundred and twenty-two dollars per EDU. And at Dave's notes here, we have that three percent escalation to account for inflation for the FY nineteen implementation. All right, sewer, obviously, we got a expensive high-tech system, ENR. Value of that facility is two hundred and twenty-three, almost two hundred and twenty-four million dollars. And that's your pump station, sewers, plant, the works. There's our debt associated with that. And the wastewater plant has its own capacity, eight point five million gallons, which results in twenty-three, thirty-four thousand EDUs. So we go through the math on that and we arrive at equity value of four thousand five hundred and fifty-one dollars per EDU.
Can you off the top of your head tell us what they are right now for water and for sewer?
The capacity.
Under the current mis, misalign.
Yeah, I have that on a, on a slide at the summer.
I didn't even add that wire.
That's all right. So the advantage is the fee would eliminate the need of a central system line fee, so we're getting rid of one of those fees. Doesn't, you know, how that's calculated, we don't have to worry about that anymore. Future adjustment of the fee is based on accepted industry cost index. We'd use engineering news record, which is an accepted by most, just about everybody I know, to bring that value up as you go through time. And there would also be additions and deletions of the city asset inventory that Keith maintains. So example, at the wastewater plant, we're gonna discontinue the chlorination facilities. Those facilities would be removed from the system and we would be adding the value of the ultraviolet system that would be there. So we keep track of those kind of things. The fee would be based on, well, of course, also the changes in the outstanding debt. So as years go by, we pay off the debt, so that outstanding debt number would decrease, assuming we didn't get any more debt. Fee would then be based on infrastructure instead of capacity, allowing the use of funds for facilities improvements, as I mentioned. And establishes a benchmark for identifying the system value with an exist, with the existing user. Allowing for a more informed decision when setting the connection fee. So you know what? The average homeowner has paid in is equity value of that system. So if you set that fee, that's what that current equity value, if you wanna discount that for reasons of attracting industry or. A development or things like that, you're, you're taking from that value only, which I think is what you're getting at, referring to. So. Capacity fee per EDU currently. See, there's three thousand five hundred and change.
Uh, Mr. Council President, I'm gonna, like you watch. I'm gonna ask the question if you think it goes over, just hold on, please. Are we suggesting a increase of? Okay. What we do now is the fifteen hundred thirteen and the twenty twenty, correct? This new equity based, has it go up to? Seven thousand, almost eight thousand dollars.
Seven thousand eight, seventy-three, yes.
Now you and I sent out a press release years ago. You and Amanda, about how we were dropping the capacity fees in order to spur development. The only development we got out of that. Was oodles and oodles of commercial. We got now. Housing. All we got was commercial because commercials, the only people. The large companies that are coming to the north end and that are plugging one in other places can afford to do that. It would be my contention that we have enough. Commercial. And this only leads to the only people who are gonna pay that capacity fee. Are, are, are commercial entities. I, I, and I would need to talk with the mayor about this, cause I'm not sure how we drop it in one year. And then come back. Because this would be for residential, correct?
Any, any, equivalent dwelling unit. So residential apartments, commercial.
Then let me ask this, does this do anything, if all the people on the planet wanted to come here? And build a house and open up a. Strip mall with another place to get some cheese steaks. Even if we pass that, could he close? Those lines on those, on those. Graphs seventeen, eighteen, twenty-six slides back?
It would have some impact that would have to be gauged in terms of what those projections are. As, as adding additional cash that we would have to be able to offset some of the CIP.
And I'm gonna go with Hardy's question. Tell me what I get out of it, besides the fact that I can already flush the toilet, turn the, turn the water on right now.
You.
I mean, granted, yes, that plate that breaks down by Hardy's house or my house has to be replaced and that's actually the benefit. It's no fun. I mean, it's really no fun at all. It's not glamorous at all, but. I'm trying to figure out how. This changes our situation when at this point, a year and a half ago, we were like, we have to drop them to spur. We have to, I tried to drop them to spur, you know, because I put out the graph that said. See, we're gonna beat those people in Delaware, because Delaware is supposed to be so damn good for business, but we're gonna be better than Georgetown and better than Seaford. And better than Laurel, and all we got was the same stuff they got on Route thirteen, sitting on our Route thirteen. And a tough inner city trying to help our neighborhoods, so. I'm not sure with the capacity you have, which is seven, you've got eight point five million gallons in sewer and seven point six seven. Changing anything unless you tell me, because if I'm correct, we're under a million gallons on a weekend of use.
Yeah, the, the eight point five is total usage.
No, I understand, but what I'm saying is, is that show me the future growth that A says. All this capacity, and, and you, you put this in to get your. To get your calculation to understand that, but if nobody's coming to use all that.
What you'd have to do is try to work on what assumptions you wanna apply. For example, if we had projected a percentage of growth that we had, which was like four percent.
If you were to have enough growth in the city where you're using your full capacity. You'd be generating much more revenue than you need. You would close that gap.
If I can't get them to come here, if I'm gonna, I'm gonna take that rate and.
Yeah. I mean, the, the reality is in operating a treatment plant.
People will come here not because the rates are lower or the taxes are lower, because our taxes are incredibly low considering what's around us. In Virginia and Pennsylvania and New Jersey, it has, oh, it, no, it's okay. I, I just figured out where my argument went in my head.
So, and I think Hardy was, we were getting ready to ask. Probably was likely handled so many questions during. Was what do we get out of it as residents, correct?
That was the direction.
I mean, like in the end, so if I'm buying into something. And I suppose to, with this kinda how it's presented, if I leave. Do I get a check from my part? I don't. You know, I mean, that's, you know, I, I don't know.
And can it be based on the new equation? Sorry.
In, in, in theory, you could say, let's say I decide to leave, so I sell my house and I'm gonna leave. Well, the problem is, if you wanted to get your check back, then the guy that bought the house wouldn't be able to connect to the sewer, you'd have to pay it back.
We'd have to put in our, we'd have to put in your, your advertisement that I'll pay for your home.
So. It's, it's, what, basically what we're trying to do is, is to get. Revenue associated with developers that come in so that they are paying a fair share coming in. And then that revenue helps for the improvements, the maintenance we have to do to keep our system running. Cause the downside is a resident, if we don't do that, things start breaking down and then our service deteriorates.
Allah, our stormwater. Allah, our stormwater.
Different subject.
I mean, if you don't maintain, you're gonna end up with, at some point, a failure.
Right.
If I could, I held this question, but I'm gonna forget it, so I'm gonna ask it. You were taking, you were saying that like the chlorine. You're gonna remove that, is that fully depreciated when you take it? Or do you wait till it's fully depreciated and then? How does that work? I'm, I'm trying to, I'm trying to equate business to the government.
Right.
Which is never easy for me and I still struggle with it and I've been here four and, four years.
It, I mean, it depends on A, how old the facility is. Cause it would last longer. We typically. We would, a structure itself would tend to have forty to fifty years of life, the equipment inside twenty to twenty-five years of life. So where it is in that depreciation schedule depends on how much you're losing. So that's all individual things we're looking at.
It's at the, it's gonna be, how is it handled on the, on the assets?
As an enterprise, it's just like a business.
It's just like a business. So you're gonna take a hit if you, if it's not fully depreciated, correct?
Based on what it has like.
Well, they said you're gonna take it out of service.
Oh, if you take it out of service, you're good. On books. But they're in their own, you know, they're, they're calculating value.
I'm at the value point.
So you're talking about two different things, books and they're talking about.
Well, I'm doing it, looking at the long-term forecast for financial health.
I, I got you.
Right? So you do, it's the same as business. Fine, okay, then answer my question, sorry.
And historically with public works, you tend to run things way beyond what their depreciated value was.
Of course.
The only reason we're probably not, it would be a case where. The, is, where you have a situation where we're upgrading facilities to meet new standards. That facility may have gone out earlier. But I think those chlorination facilities go back quite a ways, seventies, I think even. So, okay?
Yeah, so.
So the, one of the things I wanted to make in this slide was to just show that. If you go back to when they were probably looking at this in more detail, we were at eighty-five oh eight. We're around seven thousand, so you're kinda getting back to where we started in terms of comparison. And then, uh, these are the comparisons with other municipalities around our area or other cities that we're familiar with. To see where we sit in terms of the current fee and the proposed fee. And I don't know whether, you know, Cambridge, Ocean City is discounting their fee or not, it's just what their published fees are.
You do not. So this may not show us that, as they say, I'm tolerating the true and final cost of the deal.
Well, it's what they're, if you went to buy, that's what the cost is gonna be at this point.
Would we be better to do a, I don't know, how do you say it like this? Because I'm just not sure. When we say this out loud, how this helps business. And I'm starting to become concerned that this budget is. God, the first meeting and already two things are going up. Actually, three things are going up, actually four things are going up. For a bu, for a buttload of people. Would it be best to do like a percentage discount? I mean. People want the water and sewer and I, I'm, I'm, we didn't do it the way Delaware did and make districts and things like that that made it easier or got. Or, or had private companies come and do it, and I'm not sure if that was, you know, a, a good idea. Anyway, but is there, is there a better way to change the equation but still have a way to be competitive? I mean, is it really slap that thing on our website that says for the next sixty days, it's thirty percent off? I mean, I hate that, but that's what gets people's attention.
Well, the reality is, is that the methodology that Mike's taking, taking you through is pretty typical in the industry. It gives you a methodology to, to say, what does it cost to provide capacity? That's the maximum defensible amount that you could charge. You have the prerogative and can make a decision to charge less than that. You could say less. You certainly have that ability. That's just the maximum amount and it gives you a basis to work from. To the extent, and I know it's, that you don't charge that. You're not getting that revenue, so existing customers to some degree have to pay a little bit more. But there's that dichotomy of, you know, if you're, if you're only using one MGD of your eight MGD treatment plant.
Right.
If you had a lot of growth in the system and had a lot of customers, because those costs are largely fixed. Your debt service is fixed. If you had seven more MGD of usage in your system, it would tremendously help you.
I guess my question is, is should we ride up to the Delmar, Rockville, Brooklyn and Georgetown meetings and see what their council's getting? I'm, I'm, I'm not joking with you. I mean, if, if charging more and people don't flee, I mean, I. Guess we all would really wanna make what they make in Rockville. wanna make what they make in Rockville, right? I mean, I think that's pretty much a...
Yeah, but Fruitland's a good example.
I mean, Fruitland's a good example. I mean, what is, is, what's their, what's their consultant doing for them next Monday night? Maybe we should get Carl and go, where he likes to go to those things. And find out what their, you know, how their, now they didn't have to bill him, you know?
Yeah. They're, in terms of scale, it's a little different.
True, true.
Just a smidge. But, uh...
I just, so you're saying with all that capacity, if we could get, if we could run it up to the maximum, then this, all this would be?
Yes, absolutely. Because you have to pay the...
Well, then we need to put a sign out on the go, drive that says thirty percent off for the next sixty days.
Do you hear what you're saying?
I am, I know.
You're scaring me.
I know, I know. The mayor would be proud of you. He'll probably text me in a little while if I'm not proud of you.
I like, I like the approach better than I like the previous approach in terms of calculation.
Yes.
Um, I'm getting the same feeling I got last year.
Right.
And, uh, so just back to the envelope, we're looking at, uh, for the average user, user, I guess, if my things are correct, we're looking at fifty-two dollars a year at eight percent.
Yeah, yeah.
For water.
Go back to that slide, sixteen dollars a quarter. So, yeah, times four, yeah.
So there's never a chance that more people play and we get, and, and the rate gets to go down? Like, how many more plates you gotta replace, Mike, before you say to me, I'm gonna give you guys a break? Is that way after you retire or way after I retire?
We got a lot, we, there's catching up to do.
See, the issue is our debt. I mean, that's the thing that's strang, you, that's the thing that's strangling you. And if you can't reduce the debt, you're always playing catch-up. And it's like, you know, it's there, you can see it and then it goes further out.
Well, it's also a combination of the debt and the old infrastructure. I mean, if you've got stuff that was built in nineteen twenty that's still in operation, I don't know how much of it we have.
At the grocery store, can I buy one of the wastewater treatment plant? I mean, can, can, if I were to say that to you, if you came up to me at the grocery store, if you were, you and I were me and I said, Jack, it's about the wastewater treatment plant, would you look at me and go, you're, you're full of it, I, and you don't know what you're talking about? Because if you didn't have all that debt, you wouldn't have debt, what do you call it, Keith? If I didn't have all that debt with the wastewater treatment plant, I certainly wouldn't borrow that much, although it would probably fix it. Everybody get a brand new pipe.
Well, it's a self, it was, your, your goal is to become self-sustaining and building a, a reserve.
Right.
That's what you wanna do.
But that debt limit has been raised and raised and raised by the state and by everybody so that we could fix the problem that we have. So we wouldn't have that kind of debt. You'd never let us do that if it wasn't for the wastewater treatment. Look here, shall we say that Mr. Cordy is motioning his head in up and down direction? There is right there.
Uh, it's a tough one.
Well, the purpose is, was to give you the background.
Could you, I know, but eventually we're gonna be sitting here going, what are we gonna do?
And, and again...
And that's gonna start tomorrow.
Yes. So obviously opportunity then to come back with any other questions and things like that that you want to...
Does your rate change, let me ask this question, is your proposed rate change, has the mayor already put that into the budget? Has he already used that? That was a little presumptuous. So his is an unrosy picture and if we were to change it, we make it even more unrosy?
Yes.
Wow.
After reviewing the...
Tell him, I'll tell, call him later.
There haven't been any changes since the ones you sent out, right?
No.
If you could, tell me how many are minimum users? I'm a minimum user.
Sure.
And, and I'd like to know, because sixteen bucks is basically what it is. I'm a hundred and four ninety-six except for the time the toilet ran for like a week and a half.
It wouldn't have happened if we had those...
If, if I had donated the debt and fixed it the way I was supposed to.
Just saying.
You could've, you could've gone on your app there. Why isn't it showing on there?
Yeah, I just, I'm, I'm, I'm not behind that now. It sounds, if we get, when we come down to like, when we're going online by and by, I just want you to know, we get it down and be like, oh, no, 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 no. Uh-uh, it's cutesy. But it's Facebook and all the rest of it's getting in trouble now. You go get in trouble for it, so.
Any other questions or comments? Now that you've ruined our afternoon.
Wow.
You're lucky. You get to maybe come in and make Mr. Fluff.
I get to do this all over the country and I would, I would say that, you know, you're not...
Are we, are we unique?
No, not at all. I mean, the average increase around the United States has been about six percent over the past fifteen years. When you look at...
Over the past fifteen years?
Yes. When you look at the water and sewer, the Bureau of Labor Statistics put out, puts out a water and sewer series index and that's been about six percent. So it's been well above inflation. And it's the replacement of existing infrastructure and the fact that most communities actually see even more of a decline in usage on a per customer basis. So those, confluence of those issues is having a huge impact around the United States. When you look at Rockville, they've raised their rates, I think, close to twelve percent a year for three or four years now. City of Annapolis raised them a hundred percent, um, about two years ago, just to do it all in one. So I'm, I'm just saying you're not...
So that waterfront, something Keith can tax.
You're not alone, but I know it's not a pleasant mention.
Yeah, yeah. Well, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, we, we, this was, this, this was well put together. I mean, there's still, there's no way you can make it smell sweet, but it's, it's as clear as I've seen, so I...
I guess, I guess what we, I mean, the rates and stuff, we're gonna be discussing that in the coming week or two. But as far as your, the proposal on changing the capacity fees and all that, I mean, that's something that we need to discuss, probably in further detail. Because it, I mean, it's something I'm gonna have to go ahead and think about and this is another work session where we're gonna sit down and have to discuss, because this is a major shift in, in philosophy and change, how we're doing business.
And that's, Julie, I don't know, I know we've been trying to do the rate schedule as part of the budget. The choice might be to go and revisit this as a separate ordinance later on or something.
You know, have you done the old analysis of strengths and, well, sort of not strengths and weaknesses, but, uh...
Alpha's and...
Positive and, and negative, are there any negative impacts to the...
I mean, are there that and then are there other models too? Are there other places that are using...
Yeah, is there a different one besides the equity model?
There is. Yeah, there's other ones out there, yes.
There's really three typical approaches. The buy-in, which is looking at historical investments. There's the incremental, which is just looking forward and saying, what are we building for capacity and let's price it based on that. And then there's the combined, which takes the...
Existing and...
Existing and the future and brings them together. Typically, if you're largely not expanding your capacity, you'd use the buy-in approach because you don't have representative projects that say, this is what it costs us to build future capacity. And that's one of the challenges you're running with your current approach. It's just, it's so dynamic because of the changes in the CIP.
And it had the, the, looking ahead in the capacity probably had more durability during the days of the building boom because everybody was looking to do that.
Right.
It was capacity, you've gotta keep building on and on. We're not in that situation anymore. So it lends itself, we have to go more to an equity standpoint in terms of where we are, is what I like. Plus, it's gonna be a lot easier for me to justify how we came to that cost. I have a binder about that thick that has all the individual footages from the GIS system to come to that, you know, those valuations.
It would be helpful if in these particular conversations, you would take a picture of that particular pipe and replace what is obviously the cleanest part of the park and put that on there so our citizens could see that, you know, you're using less, you're flushing less, that this is what's underneath the ground, this has to be replaced. If it wasn't for the existing pipes and the pipe to run it out here or to run it out to there, using all that capacity would be good for us, except we have all that infrastructure that has to lead up to it. Would that be a correct? If I were to say that out loud somewhere, maybe the person talking to me would probably be like, again, Jim, I don't know what you're talking about. But hopefully you'd be at the table behind me and you'd pat me on the shoulder and go, you were right, or no, you were way off on that. I'm just trying to get a sense of how, because the, none of this is in the, the budget message or, or, or anything like that. Maybe I should have learned to do my budget messages like that and just put the pretty pictures up first.
Yeah, you're, you're absolutely right because water and sewer is a highly fixed cost business. It's not a variable cost business. So if somebody uses less water, you still have to man the facilities. The variable component is very, very small.
And we're not hiring eighteen new people because that's usually in all, in all the other parts of the budget, it's, it's always personnel costs.
This is capital intensive.
So this is underneath, this is underneath the ground, this is a lift station, this is a scrubber.
Correct.
This is...
The, the way that I, sort of, the easiest way to describe it is you can carry it in buckets. If, well, what's the, what are your choices?
That's, 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 that's your answer to him.
If the pipe goes bad...
You're back to chamber pots and carrying in buckets.
Get your buckets.
And it's gonna go in the river.
And it sounds like you're trying to make, but it's not. It's, it's the, it's the fact. That's exactly what we'd be back to. And, and, and the other issue is we've got this humongous debt that we've developed that we've, for, for good, and I'm not saying we just went out willy-dilly and developed it. I'm not saying that. What I am saying is that we've got this debt that we incurred to make the system what it is now. We've gotta continue to maintain it and we've also have to pay for it. And, you know, my father's, God rest his soul, pay me now, pay me later. You pay me later, it's gonna cost you a lot more money. So we have some tough decisions we're gonna have to make. But I thank you for your...
Yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Keith. Something to look forward to.
Because RuPaul's arguing over.
He's staying if you're behind him, so. Thanks again.
It's a good discussion.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, yeah. So I tried to go to sleep tonight. Okay, um, we have, we do have a request, that finishes the items on the agenda. We do have a request for comments on not something that was on the agenda. Lynn, do you have anything new that you didn't say last week or...
I do.
Okay. You've got your four minutes.
Okay. I'm ready with my show and tell.
I won't start until you get up there.
That's good. I can walk fast and talk quick because I'm already late to dress rehearsal when I got costumes in the car.
Oh, boy.
All right, this is show and tell. Lynn Bratton, resident three oh three South Boulevard, Salisbury, Maryland, owner of property, Bratton Properties and Bratton Rentals. And at the last meeting, I did make some comments and I've tried to explain them a little bit in more detail and this has been mailed to the city council members and to Mayor Day and I've shared it with Mr. Howard. As I explained in my comments at the city council meeting on April ninth, twenty eighteen, I have more, many concerns about ordinance twenty-four eighty. It's my understanding that this ordinance was patterned after the ordinance currently in effect that relates to grass cutting and brush removal. It is my opinion that rubbish removal and maintenance of grass and brush are totally different in nature. Please allow me to explain. I own the ground at my property and my, I own my grass and I own my bushes. I know how fast they usually grow and I have a regular maintenance schedule that will allow me to stay in compliance with the grass regulations, the brush removal rules and the grass and the sidewalk requirements. I do not believe that I will have someone placing a clump of grass over twelve inches in height in my yard at random. I don't believe that anyone will just come along and plant a bush that would be overgrown and would cause an issue at random. But on a regular and consistent basis, the trash of others can become my trash. And while I deal with it as quickly and efficiently as possible, it is not the same as the grass and the brush issues. Add into that, the grass and the brush issues are normally seasonal and so you're dealing with a shorter amount of months, maybe somewhere between April and October. After that, it's snow and that was another whole, that would be another whole issue. But this would be rubbish you're doing on a twelve-month basis. So again, you're not doing apples and apples, you're doing apples and apricots. So it, it's just a little different. Therefore, painting the rubbish issue with the same brushes, grass cutting and trying to mimic the ordinances and their punishments do not seem germane. As I mentioned at the April ninth meeting, uh, twenty eighteen, I also have the following concerns. One, how is this ordinance any different from the existing clean it or lean it laws that are on the books? Number two, who decides the definition of rubbish and with what vengeance it will be enforced? If a picture proves that the trash is new trash, then I could have, I could have two violations in ten days, followed by a third ten days later, even though the trash is being cleaned up every several days. And that comes, well, you had mentioned they'd be taking pictures, we had the, the yellow trash bag could be a different yellow trash bag, but it could be in a different place. It looks like I never cleaned it up, but I did. What are the legal implications regarding evictions and the necessary time items must obey law? Remain on the property after a legal eviction? What is the value of not informing a landowner of the occurrences since hopefully compliance is the goal? Notification of the property owner should continue and abatement should occur as a last resort for unresolved, uh, issues? How can we clean our city of blowing trash that comes from neighboring stores, people on the street, a neighbor, or even from a load of trash going to the landfill? Can we dialogue with others for solutions? I would sincerely request that this ordinance retain, return to a work session for further discussion in light of these and other questions that others will bring to the table. I do support a clean community. I support trash cans on street corners. I support signage reminding people not to throw their trash, that littering is, is illegal. I support education that littering is bad for everyone. Please consider, reconsider the language of this ordinance and allow additional input from the city office of housing, other property owners and business owners before passing it. Thank you very much. And I brought show and tell. This is what I picked up from one yard on Saturday of last week and my, my grass cutting crew is going over there again tomorrow, so I'm sure there will be other things that will be picked up. But in the, in the things that were picked up was, um, entire bag of things that probably were supposed to go into somebody's trash cans, got some recyclables in it, so I'll take that home. The bags themselves are, are trash that was picked up along the fence and so they're, they're actually blowing, I don't know, there's actually, I'm still picking up, um, garbage from trick or treat. I mean, I found a mask, uh, in the yard, I've got now-a-later wrappers, I've got candy wrappers, we've got just, just, you know, things off of bottles. It, it could be where something fell out of a trash can and blew and it still becomes the issue. That's it. Thank you for letting me speak.[1751.87]